All right, thank you everybody for being here. We will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of March 4th, 2024 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton. Brereton is absent. Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal is absent. Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
All right, thank you. If you'll please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you this evening for our country, our community, our families, and our freedom. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members, for the men and women veterans who have served this nation throughout our history. We ask that you bless them and their families. We thank you, Lord, for our police and fire paramedic first responders in our community and throughout our country, who bravely serve our citizens, no matter what the call. We pray for their safety and well-being. Tonight, we pray for guidance, and we ask that you give each of us compassion, patience, understanding, courage, and wisdom as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We pray for these things, in Christ's name, amen. All right, moving on. Under public comment, we have potentially two individuals that are registered. I will offer Mary Gifford. If Mary wanted to speak this evening, she certainly may at this time, under pub-
Can I wait?
You can? Did you want to wait? Okay. You may, yeah. Thank you. And we have with us tonight Pam Lopez-Fettis. Pam, good evening. Nice to see you.
Good seeing you. Thank you. I just wanted to share with you some information in front of you. I shared some information from an organization that we work with called the International Economic Development Corp- Council. It's our international organization that, and it shares a lot of detail in different areas about the work of economic development, all the things that we're engaged in. But I just wanted to really briefly just share with you that it's very important, you know, the resources that you provide us goes to help us with the, with our tools, basically, provides us with the tools that we need to do the job that we do. For instance, you know, we have fire and police that need tools, you know, you know, in order to provide a wonderful service to our community. We have water department that has a lot of resources and tools that provide resources to our community. Every single department provides that. Economic development, our role is to really provide you with the growth in our community in order for those resources to come into your community, to pay for those wonderful things. So with last year, our budget that was provided by the city was reduced significantly. This, maybe we're not feeling those implications immediately, but we will in the, in the future. And we ask that you increase us to put those resources back into the community, back into growth dimensions, so we can do the job that we're here to do for you. That's the intent of economic development, is to provide money for the taxing bodies, for the, in order to, so you can provide those resources to your community. And again, we just ask for you for, to provide us with those resources and those tools in order to help us do our job and, and to make this a viable community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I don't, excuse me, Pam, just a minute. Anybody have any questions for Pam? If anybody had any questions for, now's the time, I guess. Alderwoman Frank.
Thank you, Pam. My question is, when we have big projects like this, do you also get money from them as well?
No, we, we do not do, nothing we do is for profit. We're an enterprise zone manager, so on behalf of that management of that system, we get a percentage of their building costs. Basically, it's what their estimated cost for building materials. So it's a percentage of that, a point, I'm sorry, point zero one percent, with maximum of $50,000. So at, in order to operate that program alone, the enterprise zone program alone, we operate a loss from year to year. And I've shared those costs in the past with you. The cost to allocate that program in this past year was about $103,000, in which the maximum resources that we received, which last year was the greatest year, was $88,000, a little bit more than $88,000. So we're always up earning a loss. That is probably the best that we've seen of the return.
Okay, but there is some money that you get. Who, who pays for that?
The businesses.
The businesses.
It's 100% the businesses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Alderwoman Gramkowski first.
Thank you, Mayor. So you get money from the county?
Yes.
And you get money from the city?
Correct.
So the city people are taxed twice?
We don't ask for any taxes. We don't receive any taxes. We get an investment from those taxing bodies as part of the work we do. So all, all the work we do, the benefit goes to cities, counties, municipalities, the state. It goes to, basically, you see it in your tax revenues, you see it in grants, you see it in your fees. We don't get those dollars through those revenue bases. We only get them through investments. And it's, we're a public-private partnership with a majority getting from the private sector. About 20% comes from the public sector. A little bit more.
Go ahead. Do you have another follow-up?
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm confused. Is there an accounting that we, I mean, if you're getting it from public, is that public? Like a budget or where all the resources are?
I shared with you in the presentation, and we have representation from your committee on our board who sees details, but we have shared that.
I think in answer to the question, any of the revenue that the city spends is obviously from tax revenue the city takes in. And so in answer to your question, I would, I would agree with that synopsis, yeah.
And tax revenue is generated from the work that we do. So it's kind of replenishing what we're doing, so we can provide you with more tax revenue.
Alderwoman Freeman first, and then Alderman Stevens.
Thank you. So Pam, I know residents, when they move to a new city, look for walkability. Is that something that investors also look for? And what would you rate Belvidere as walkability? Because I'd give it about a zero to one.
That's a good question. There's a couple of different things that we're working on that addresses walkability. A lot of times, our site selectors, brokers that we work with, are looking at access to the workforce. And sometimes it's in the matter of, can they walk with what radius? Can they drive? Can they get there by train? So that's what they are paying attention to. Walkability is very important, especially with passenger rail coming in there, what access they have to local resources. So that, sometimes the, where the housing is, where that development is, access to those resources are really important. So infrastructure, including roads, sidewalks, you know, transportation, all very important. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. And Alderman Stevens.
Do we ever get your budget, your expenses, or anything like that, a detailed one, or?
The mayor had, receives that on a monthly basis.
You know, I will say that part of the discussion, whenever we have anybody come before the council, and they ask the council, of course, you understand that I don't vote unless there's a tie, and, or in a supermajority needed vote. I don't do that. I will get the information, Alderman Stevens, that you request. I have run in recently to some criticism about my not taking part maybe in growth dimensions. And I will briefly say this, is that, first of all, I do believe that the mayor is the mayor of Belvidere first and foremost. I wear the hat. I was elected to represent the taxpayers in this community. I have put into this budget what I believe is a fair investment on behalf of the city of Belvidere, and I continue to believe it's a fair investment. Now, other people may not agree with that, and that's fine. But I think everybody, potentially, if we look at asking for money, everybody asks for money from the city of Belvidere, and I don't think they're, the city technically is Andrew Carnegie. I don't think we have an endless amount of money to go around, and that everybody asks for money necessarily needs money, or they, it may be a matter of want, not need, and that's how I define it. But I had put into the budget an amount that I had felt was fair, and it's up to the council to decide whether or not I'm right. There is nothing that I see, for instance, last year when an alderman had decided that they were going to make a reduction, and I think that reduction was by 64% to what the taxpayers donate to growth dimensions, there was a sky, there was concern about whether or not that organization would be able to do it. And I had had some discussions with actually Mr. Opperman, the chairman, the chairman of Growth Dimensions, about some issues that I felt were important, but also about whether or not that was a need, or whether that was a want. And I had that discussion during this budget cycle as well. So anyhow, I think, as I said, philanthropy starts at home. The city, the money for the city, believe you me, I have departments, we have had departments, we've taken a massive hit regarding our paramedic issue and regard to some, regarding some of the expenses that we haven't been able to, you know, it's a shortfall. We had a million dollar shortfall here. And I had brought this up last year, knowing that we were giving, we were giving, you know, a very short period of time to try and circle the wagons and get around it. So Alderwoman Freeman, did you have a discuss, did you have to come in?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. And so, you know, that's the thing, is that we have to make sure that we represent the taxpayers here with all the services that we have to provide. We have to be prudent about it. My budget reflects that first and foremost, we have to take care of the city business that we have, the services that we provide. I would love to be able to play Andrew Carnegie and give everybody money that we don't have. And we don't. I think you all know that we are at a three-month or three-and-a-half-month reserve in our fund, and it's not like we have abundance of money, and we also have a huge amount of responsibility that we're coming, that we're coming forward with. I don't begrudge anybody who asks the city for Belvidere. I just want to be realistic about how we represent and who we represent, who we represent first and foremost. So that's my comment, and if anybody else has any follow-up, feel free. Alderman Albertini.
Thank you, Mayor. I notice whenever the growth comes to the city, such as General Mills, or Walmart, or Midwest Refrigeration, there's always a press release, and usually it's you and Pam Fuentes there. And I always appreciate the fact that you do acknowledge that part of this coming to the city is hard work on the mayor's doing, and hard work on Pam Fuentes' or Growth Dimensions' doings. I'd like to think that because of all this, that we're waving our glory flags over for the future income, that we can recognize these people in the future, so that we can continue to get more of this growth coming. It's a large growth, and I'd like to see more. The truck stop, that was a good growth. Unfortunately, it seems to have come to a stop. I don't know why, but hopefully they get on turn, and we eventually reap income from them. But I do feel that Growth Dimensions is a value to the city regardless of the income. If we can figure out understandably where to get the money from, it would be appreciative, I'm sure, from Growth Dimensions, but I think it would also be appreciative from the citizens to see their community continuing to grow in the fashion it has been growing in the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Pam. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, moving on. That's all we have for public comment. Approval of the minutes, item A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council, as of dated February 19th, 2024, as presented. The minutes that are in your, that were in your packet that you have in front of you this evening, could I have a motion for their approval, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you, and a second. Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions, any comments, or any corrections on the minutes? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes, the motion on the floor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any buddy who has an issue with them, nay. Okay, motion passed, thank you. And under public hearing, we have none. Under special messages and proclamations, I don't believe we have any this evening. Under approval of expenditures, we have none. And under item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers, we have item A, eight A, that being an approval of minutes of the special meeting of the committee of the whole budget retreat of February 17th, 2024, as presented. Could I have a motion? Those are in your packet as well. If I could have a motion to approve them, please, thank you. Motion by Alderman Albertini, and a second, if I could get a second. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. And if there's any comments, any questions, any corrections, anybody who has a floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any that are opposed, okay, motion passed, thank you. And we have item B, eight B. In front of you, you have those minutes in your packet, those being the minutes of February 26th, for the approval of the regular minutes of the whole public safety and finance and personnel, as presented. If I could get a motion to that effect, please, for approval? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. And a second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any comments, any corrections regarding the motion on the floor? Okay? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, okay? Motion passed, thank you. And we move to unfinished business, item nine. We have for a second reading this evening, an ordinance granting, ordinance 661-H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment with, within the general business, business district located at 1217 Logan Avenue. And if I could get a motion to that effect, please, anybody? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. And any discussion? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, you can come up here, you're registered, come on up. Sure.
My name is Mary Gifford. I'm here representing my family business, Concordia Lanes, owned by the Gallin family since 1972, concerning more gaming, et cetera, especially next door. In a thousand foot where we're at, we already have six gaming establishments, within a thousand foot right there. We depend on the income from these games to keep our business open. Every time more is added, our income goes down. Therefore, as a small business, we're at risk to stay open in this community. Concordia has been in business since 1958. Just all the saturation, et cetera, doesn't help. And Labor Day, when the actual casino opens, the Hard Rock, I'm sure there's going to be a big loss from all of our gaming businesses, because that will be a big draw for people to go over there and game, and take money to Rockford and out of Belvidere. Just, we need this money to survive, for us to keep the doors open. I guess that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Mary. I appreciate you coming here this evening, so I appreciate it. All right, we have motion on the floor, and a second then regarding item A, that being the ordinance 661-H for second reading here this evening, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the general business district 12, located at 1217 Logan Avenue. Any comments from the council? Alderwoman Frank. And then Alderman Flurry.
When it comes time to, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Absolutely. Alderman Flurry.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking tonight. I'm just one of a few aldermen that, when I first came on the committee, the gaming was set at 30. When I raised it to 40, I voted no. When I raised it to 50, I voted no. However, my understanding is they meet all the requirements to pass this permit, so I mean, we can't, you know, I'm a firm believer that, you know, if you meet the requirements, of course we'll vote yes, because, you know, if they meet the requirements, although it's unfortunate that there's a saturation rate, you know, I try to prevent that from not letting more gaming be posted. However, if they're meeting the requirements, I don't think there's anything we can do to not approve it.
So the special use for indoor commercial entertainment and video gaming are, they're connected, but they're not the same thing. When the council approved the use of video gaming in the community, there was no separation requirements, density requirement, stuff like that. The special uses for indoor commercial entertainment, which encompasses multiple land uses, bowling alleys, bars, arcades, which is where the video gaming comes in, it's basically an arcade, things like Nine Iron that has the indoor golf simulators, pool halls, dance halls, banquet center, stuff like that. It's, it's a pretty all-encompassing special use. So the, that's why the indoor commercial entertainment special use is not limited, because it, it's for multiple things. They could get this and be able to put in a bar in their building, even if the state or whatever denies the video gaming. So yeah, so there's not a separation. When we look at special uses, there's these things called the sale factors, the findings of fact, that's what's spelled out in the staff report, and it's, doesn't impact the orderly development of adjacent properties, does it impact traffic, stuff like that. And all those answers are kind of spelled out in the staff report that you guys get, and that's what the planning commission votes on. So in this case, one thing with special uses is that usually you can condition them in order to make them, you know, be appropriate. So in this case, because parking was somewhat restricted on the site, they are conditioned to just using a limited area of that building, since there's not enough parking for the whole area, they are conditioned to building a wall to separate the special use area from the office area, so it's not going to be like video machines in the lobby of an office building. It's going to be separated, so it's more like a multi-tenant strip mall, stuff like that, to make it meet those conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Snow?
And I appreciate Concordia voicing their concern. Unfortunately, the person who wants to open this up has the right to open a business and not be restricted because somebody else doesn't want them there. Unfortunately, free enterprise dictates that. I have had, again, more comments about the saturation of more aesthetics of the, the fact that we have so many gaming establishments, and that, and maybe we need to relook at that. And we could drastically reduce the count, and as people drop, stop using them, go out of business, or whatever, that would reduce the aesthetics of being a gaming town, per se, but I think unfortunately, based on the information here, that there's no direct impact that we can justify saying no. The other thing is, again, and I don't know if it's holding true or not, but I thought the state was looking at oversaturation in generic areas as they were giving permissions on their end. So the owner of this potential establishment may not ever get one from the state, depending on what they do.
I'll make a comment on that real quick. So I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any secret that the state has been all-in on gaming, video gaming. I think they wanted to use this as a lottery that solves a lot of the ills that communities face, and quite contrary, I would agree that you have, you reach a saturation point where you have the same piece of pie, and you have it carved up, divided up, into just more individuals. But I don't think that you actually incur any more gaming. I also agree that, you know, I've had, I have had complaints regarding some of the advertisement, I suppose, about gaming, and I, I agree with that. I don't think it is, you know, I don't think it looks good for the community. I never have. I also, you know, know that at one point, it was 30. It was raised to 40 prior to me getting into office. I would have thought we may have seen a saturation point there. But I think Gina and I have had this conversation publicly, actually, regarding potentially what happens when people either get declined, or they withdraw their, their application for gaming. And it has happened. I think when we had decided, I had asked that there be a moratorium placed on it at 45, and instead, the, the motion came out as make it unlimited. I don't believe that it's unlimited. I don't believe it should be unlimited, just for the pure aesthetics. And I don't believe, but I do believe that there is a saturation number at some time. Right now, the council, we have placed that on 50, that has been placed on 50, and I don't know if that's the case or not. I kind of think it is, because we have had several, I believe, that were going to apply for, or that had applied for it, and now that are not going to be one of the ones that were waiting, potentially waiting on the waiting list. So I think it has, you know, leveled itself out. I understand what Mary Gifford is saying. Believe me, I get it, and I understand that. And, you know, it's kind of like, once a genie's out of the bottle, then how do you put the, how do you put it back in? But the way you do it is you control your numbers, numerics, and I would hope that as we go forward, maybe we do take another look at that. But I also want to thank you for coming down here this evening, because I know how sincere you are. You have been here since 1958, and you've been here a long time. The way our ordinance sets now is that we cannot deny anybody based upon, you know, anything other than, regarding our, at least our planning zoning, at least our zoning, we cannot, we cannot deny anybody else. And I think that falls completely to numerics, so anyhow, who else? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Like Alderman Flurry, I too voted against adding to, adding more gaming to the city. That is my word, and it's saturated. I, I know we can't deny this, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, but I think we need to really look. This is, it's getting ugly, and we have the sale flags on Logan Avenue in front of the those slot, those have to be taken down. So it is getting unsightly.
I would not disagree with you. Alderman Stevens?
I think, you know, what from Concordia down to Farman Fleet, and then-
I think, you know, what from Concordia down to Farman Fleet and then towards Fast Fuel, with this one, that'd make it six of them right in that area, or seven? Oh, okay.
I don't know. I think one of them that we had talked about had closed on the corner of... Or did they not... They had closed or they had not asked to pull a gaming license on the corner of Logan Avenue and Geno Road. Is that right?
Rosa Slots on the corner of Logan and Belvedere, they closed on February 22nd. There is another company interested in taking over that spot, though. I believe the seventh spot that Alderman Stevens is referencing is the Logan Avenue Slots, which is unincorporated Boone County. That's not within the city.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, I just had a comment, and then I had a question for Attorney Drela. I think that, you know, as far as saturation, I don't think people would be trying to open up a business in an area that they didn't think was going to be profitable. So, you know, I don't know if they're looking to take business away from the surrounding businesses, or how they feel like that's a good location for them if it is already saturated. I guess that's a business decision that they're willing to gamble on. As far as competition, I'm thankful for Concordia, but they don't just... They're not just a slot place. I mean, they have the best burgers in town, and they are the only viable bowling alley in a city of 25,000 people. So, I'm hoping that that sustains you. But then I had a question, like, can we legally, Attorney Drela, discriminate against a business based on just competition?
I think you answered a question by using the word discriminate. Of course not. The comments on saturation in area, the state does have rules requiring that they're not allowed to have, according to the rules, a plethora of gaming establishments in close proximity to each other. There's no hard and fast rule on that. We have seen them invoke that, denying a state license to a potentially gaming parlor that was located in the same strip mall as where there was one already. We've all seen them approve those. Whether or not they would look and say that this proposed establishment is, I think, a door or two down from another current establishment, would that lead them to deny it? It might, but again, that's a state decision, not a local one. This is the city council. The decision whether or not to approve the special use is a legislative decision by the city council. That being said, if an applicant meets the requirements of your zoning code for a special use and you deny it, it makes it very susceptible to judicial attack later on. So, you know, if you're going to deny it, make sure that you have some good reasons for doing so. If they do meet all the requirements for a special use, it's very difficult to withstand judicial scrutiny if it is eventually denied.
Which I think is all the reasons why, as we pointed out before, that we started out with 30. That was a moratorium was 30. We had 30. That was the number. And they weren't going to issue them, and then it was moved to 40. And so, I guess numerics technically determine that, and that's up to us. That's up to the council to decide. And anyhow, Alderwoman Frank?
So, even though we really can't... I wouldn't say the word discriminate. Even though we can't deny them, we're still told that we have to vote for this. So, it's not just a yes vote. You can vote no.
Anybody can vote, anything... Anybody can vote up or down, yea or nay. Anybody who sits here can do that, so I'm not... I would never tell anybody they have to vote for anything or against anything. That's up to everybody. Yep. Anybody else? Alderman Stevens, did you have your hand up? Did I miss you? No? Okay. All right. Alderman Albertini?
So, just to make it clear, what the attorney said, if we were to vote no, and even though they fully qualify, we would leave ourselves open to some challenge later on in the courts based on they were qualified and we denied it just because we felt they were oversaturated in that area. Is that my correct understanding?
It's a legislative decision for the council. You can vote your conscience. If there's no legal basis for that decision, though, yes, it does open up to judicial attack. You're always open to judicial attack, though. So, that's one way to look at it. Gina hit the nail on the head, though, when she said, and we all know we're talking about video gaming, but that's not what the application is for. This is not an application for a special use for video gaming. With a special use, he can open a bar and do nothing more. With a special use, he can open up a pool hall and do nothing more. With a special use, he could open up a Chuck E. Cheese if he had enough space and do nothing more. The special use is not for video gaming, and I think that's important. He will have to go get a liquor license from the city and qualify for that before he can apply for the video gaming because that is required because it's not a drug stop. That's the $10,000 fee. It used to be $20,000, but the council reduced it, which, of course, makes it a little bit easier for people to open these businesses. But, you know, so I guess what I'm saying is, you're not actually voting on video gaming, even though we all know what we're talking about.
Alderman Snow, thank you. Alderman Snow?
So, that brings up a couple of points, and for future discussion, I would ask that we look at the number of gaming establishments, again, be put on the committee agenda, and the liquor license fee. I'm going to guess that most of the liquor licenses that we've approved in the last five years have all been gaming, except for maybe all these, for the most part, and maybe we can increase our resources by increasing the liquor license back to a higher amount than it is currently. That might curb some of the desire to establish these, but there again, we can't limit it just to put somebody, to put the screws to the market. So, I remember somebody bringing up the fact that they wished a Woodman's would come to town, and the other grocery stores are, why would you wish that? That's just going to put us out of business, that type of a thing. So, it's a crapshoot, that's for sure.
Okay, so noted regarding the comments about any future discussions. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor then, and so if there's no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion, ordinance 6... Excuse me, ordinance 661H, before you this evening for a special reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the general business district located at 1217 Logan Avenue. And if there's no other comments or no other questions, those in favor, will when the clerk calls a roll, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. Thank you.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Abstained.
McGee?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Five in favor?
Does that include Alderman Gramkowski?
It does. The abstained, so that...
You counted it with the ayes?
I did not count it.
Goes with majority. Does that say it now?
Yes, motion passed.
All right. Motion passed, thank you. You know, before we move away from this and, you know, go on, I think that the city of Belvedere probably has to have a... Has to have a, maybe an evaluation within the city about what we want to look like. It's maybe, as I said, the genie's been out of the bottle, but as we go forward, I think those are all prudent points regarding fees, regarding numerics, and I would actually welcome those to come back before the council, so I think that's where we'll go. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on, item B, ordinance 662H in front of you for a second reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow in-vehicle sales or service as an accessory within the central business district, excuse me, located at 600 South State Street. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. And a second by Alderman McGee, thank you. And any questions? Any comments regarding this ordinance that you have in front of you again this evening? Alderman Snow?
So, Gina, the... It's not a big concern of mine because I don't see it being an issue, but this drive-through obviously eliminates a substantial portion of the parking. How does that work with the ratios that are required, or have they already exceeded their ratio, and this doesn't affect that?
The property is zoned central business, which is our downtown zoning. On-site parking is not required in the central business district because of the abundance of municipal lots and on-street parking. So, although they are losing that southern parking lot, they still meet the zoning code requirements for parking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderwoman Frank? I'm sorry. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Gina, this is just going to be a outdoor used car sales lot? They're not going to have like a building and a showroom, or it's not going to... It's just a used car lot?
It's drive-through lanes for the bank.
Oh, it's drive-through lanes for the bank?
Yeah, so it's Midland Bank. It's... They're adding five drive-through lanes with a bypass lane on the south side inside that parking area.
That's amazing.
Yep, and then once this project is complete, the drive-through property a little farther east on Logan will be put up for sale.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions regarding ordinance 662H? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item C, 9C on the agenda tonight, ordinance 663H is in front of you for a second reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow planned development within the heavy industrial district located at 1245 Irene Road, which would be MRS. So, the council for MRS is here. If anybody has any questions, but I would entertain a motion. Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. And a second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. If there's any questions, feel free, now's the time. Okay. Alderman Albertini?
I have one quick question. This property just recently applied for, or the city applied for them for a grant. Was that for water and sewer?
That was for equipment. That was for equipment grant, and I'll give you a little bit of a... I'll give you a little bit of a background on that. And so, that... I thought you huffed at me. Okay, good.
I wouldn't do that. I like my job.
Thank you. I feel better already.
I huffed at my wife.
Okay, okay. Anyhow, so the city had been... Had requested a grant that the cities... That the applicant, that only the city can apply for, on behalf of the applicant, in order to help them. This particular applicant was choosing between two states, two communities in different states. And so, the city of Belvedere decided that we would go after some of the money that we're entitled to, to ask for, grant, a help in order to win in competing for development within the city of Belvedere. So, we did go after that in August. Ms. Hanson, and Brent, and Kip, and Gina, and Mike, and they had... We had dealt with trying to get through what I called a bureaucratic riddle that almost you could not solve with the state. Everything was going smashingly well, and then it all smashed. And at the 11th hour, we were told that we weren't going to be able to get this. Well, the applicant had a deadline that we knew that we were going to try and meet. We were told that we would be able to meet it, and unfortunately, it came down to the 11th and a half hour. At that time, we had done everything that we could do, except I had called the governor, and I had to ask him, I don't know how to overcome the political, what I call bureaucratic red tape. I don't know how to do that. It's beyond me. I don't know how to do it, but if we don't, if we don't overcome it come Friday, two days, we're going to probably lose this to the other state and the other city. And I will tell you this much, the city of Belvedere prevailed because the governor the next morning made sure that we were able to get on a conference call with those who denied us at a state agency, who denied us the right to even want to continue to talk about it, even though, even though what was at stake was that we were going to lose this. And with it, we would have lost a $51 million project along with jobs, but there's going to be future development with this. This is going to be three times, hopefully, three times as big. But, with all that being said, the... Their client, and I don't want to speak for the attorney by any means, and I'm not going to say anything specific, but their client obviously needed an answer because, and MRS needed an answer in order to fulfill that obligation that they're going to have a site for them to build on. So, thank you. I want to give kudos to who deserve it. I want to thank my staff. I want to thank Shannon. I want to thank Brent. I want to thank Mike. I want to thank Gina, and I want to thank Kip because we had done our due diligence on this project. We had, we had this, we had this grant in order, according to the rules that were laid out for the city of Belvedere to help MRS, and we did our part. And we ended up going a little bit further at the very end, but we were able to secure it. So, with that being said, I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank Governor Pritzker. I wasn't elected to get into... I ran as an independent. I wasn't elected to get into partisan politics, but I certainly know good help when I get it. And anybody who'll take a phone call from me at 8:43 in the evening, on a Wednesday evening, I appreciate the help. So, that's the story behind this project, and I appreciate all the hard work from the team at Belvedere and working to be able to secure this and working to the point where we have this development, and we're going to have, hopefully, three more developments that are going to be similar in size with the same amount of employees. And believe me, it's tough to compete for them, and it certainly doesn't get any easier as we continue to jump through what I call bureaucracy. So, we were able to do it. Thank you to the governor, thank you to Governor Pritzker, and thank you to the staff here. Appreciate it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second then to approve ordinance 663H for second reading here this evening, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow the planned development within a heavy industrial district located at 1245 Irene Road, and this being the MRS Midwest Refrigerated Services Project. If there are no other comments or questions, Alderman Snow?
In glancing at some of this, I... And it might come up, I can't imagine it would, but I saw that there was stuff about not having to comply with the typical screening of equipment and that they can have their vegetation grow over eight inches, and I was curious how that works and what the rationale and all that.
Ms. Del Ros?
So, for the screening of equipment, one of the reasons why they requested the excess building height is because the very large refrigeration units are built almost as a penthouse suite, so they're kind of like by default screened with that wall on the roof. And the way the zoning code is set up is that it's out of sight from being on the property line, and with the height of the building at the property line, very low visibility. But, yes, they did not want to do the traditional parapet wall screening. Instead, they're doing a penthouse suite kind of screening. So, it'll still be screened from view, and the penthouse design actually helps buffer the sound a lot better than your typical parapet wall, so it is better for the neighboring properties. As far as the vegetation... low visibility, but yes, they did not want to do the traditional parapet wall screening, instead they're doing a penthouse suite kind of screening. So, it'll still be screened from view, and the penthouse design actually helps buffer the sound a lot better than your typical parapet wall, so it is better for the neighboring properties. As far as the vegetation, as the mayor alluded to, this project is in four phases, maybe five, so with Phase One, there's still going to be abundance of that acreage left undeveloped. Instead of having 60 acres of mowed grass, which quite frankly is a waste and is unnecessary, they wanted to do native planting so that they would be maintenance-free. So, but native plantings are often over eight inches in height, so in order to be on the safe side, they requested that waiver.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other comments, or any other concerns? All right, we have that motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, all those opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Moving on, Item 10, under New Business, we have Ordinance 664H for a first reading, that being an ordinance amending Section 114-231 with the Appendix A attached of the Belvedere Municipal Code to modify water and sewer rates. That will be back in two weeks. That is a, that is a first reading this evening?
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, at your, at your tables this evening is the correct ordinance for first reading that was introduced this evening. There had been error in the one that was in your packets, forgot to include the correct effective dates that Mr. Anderson wanted, so the correct first reading document was at your table this evening.
Thank you for that, I neglected to mention that, thank you. All right, flipping the page, more motions forwarded from the Committee of the Whole, Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel, February 26, '24, motions out of public safety, Chairman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to purchase 68 dual-band radios and associated equipment from Rock River Services for $584,847.84. The AFG grant will cover $526,200, sorry, $363.06 of the radio expenditure, and the remaining balance of $58,484.78 will be shared as stated in the memorandum of understanding included, including the city of Belvedere Fire Department, Boone County Fire District Number One, Boone County Fire District Number Two, and North Boone Fire District Number Three. City of Belvedere's share will be $12,069.10.
Okay, thank you. Out of committee, is there any questions, any comments, any concerns coming out of committee here? Alderman Snow?
So, just for everybody that's listening at this point, this half a million dollars worth of expenditure, the city is just being used as a conduit to bring that money in and then allow the other jurisdictions to reimburse us for their expense?
Yeah, that's, that's true, and it says it, as Chairman Flurry said, at the very end, the city's share will be $12,069.10. And any other questions, any other comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Chief Shidul. So, if you take the remaining balance, $58,484, and divide that by the four entities, it comes out to like $14,621 each, so why are we paying less than the other ones?
The figures, the AFG grant covers 90% of the cost, and then each department requested a certain number of radios, and so us in District One only requested 14 radios, District Two requested 22, and I can't recall what, I think 18 for District Three, so the cost shares dependent on the cost of the equipment that was requested initially when writing the grant.
Okay. All right, thank you, anybody else? Any other questions, comments? All right, we have the motion out of committee. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will, when their name is called, answer aye, and he opposed nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Alder, Chairman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. B, motion to approve the Special Olympic Athletes Parade permit request from Belvedere Township Park District for May 2nd, 2024.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee, any questions, any comments, any concerns? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will, when their name is called, answer aye, and he opposed nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item C, Chairman Flurry?
C, motion to approve the Belvedere Area Chamber of Commerce Street Closure Requests for 2024 Buchanan Street Markets as outlined in their letter, January 22nd, 2024.
Okay, thank you, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Albertini?
Okay, all costs concerned for this will be covered by the Chamber of Commerce as far as cleanup, setups, security.
Well, I mean, the city of Belvedere, the city of Belvedere takes part in putting out, I think we put out refuse, we dumped them, I believe. Brent, you want to weigh in on this, but I do believe that we are, we do play an active part, it is a chance to enhance Buchanan Street, some of our business owners, and have the people partake, so, but I don't want to get out in the weeds and drown here, so.
Yes, we do, Public Works Street Department primarily sets up and takes down the barricades and the needed waste facilities and so forth, and empties those out, but the fact that they've moved them now from Sundays to Fridays means it can be a little less overtime, a little less expense incurred by the city on, to do those events.
Do you have a rough amount of what that would cost out of our Public Works for this?
I've never run the numbers, I'd have to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. All those in favor of the motion then to approve the Belvedere Area Chamber of Commerce Street Closure Request for 2024 Buchanan Street Markets, as outlined in the letter, January 22nd, 2024, all those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye, and he opposed nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
McGee?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And last, Chairman Flurry?
D, motion to approve the Street Closure Request for State Street from Lincoln Avenue to First Street, as well as Logan Avenue between State and Main Street on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, between 3:00 PM and 7:30 PM.
Okay, thank you. That coming out of committee, are there any questions regarding the motion out of committee? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will, when their name is called, answer aye, and he opposed nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Okay, thank you, Chair, Chairwoman Mohal is not here, so Alderwoman Gramkowski, would you help me out, please?
Sure, thank you. E, motion to authorize waiving the building and zoning fees for Habitat for Humanity Project at 1115 Garfield Avenue.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye, and he opposed nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, and that's all we have this evening on our agenda. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Albertini. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anybody who wants to stay? All right, for the record, we adjourned at 7:03 PM, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.